Councilmember Ferguson.
Here.
Councilmember Hamm.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Bain.
Here.
Would you like to do the pledge?
Yep. Join Councilmember Hamm and the witness. Ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
First item on the agenda is a report from the Assistant City Manager concerning the proposed police services contract for fiscal year 2019-20.
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the City Council, Mike Johnston, Management Analyst with the City Manager's Office. The item before you is the fiscal year 2019-2020 Police Services Contract with the Orange County Sheriff's Department. That contract totals $16,345,966, and that contract includes one full-time crime prevention specialist and two patrol deputies. That concludes my report, and I'll stand by and be available for any questions.
Any questions, comments from the councilmembers? Nope? All right. So first up is going to be Mr. Malamud, followed by Amy Berberet, and then Don Urbanick.
Counsel, I think we all here support the contract and ask you to vote yes, but that's really not the issue for us, for many of us. Two-hundred-plus residents have been attending and asking for more deputies. Not one person has said we have a sufficient number of deputies. Last meeting, Kathy Ward walked out, and in the paper she's quoted saying, "A budget is a process. A councilmember wanted to completely change our budget after approving it two weeks ago and cut 5% across the board in all city departments. That is why I chose not to participate. I promised the people of San Clemente that I would bring forth responsible budgets and protect that credit rating." Properly funded, and that's the end of the quote, "properly funded deputies and making cuts elsewhere would protect our credit rating." Kathy appears clueless and lacks common sense, and I hate to say that that way, but deputies are what keeps us safe. Ms. Ferguson only requested the council vote to direct the city manager to explore cuts. No cuts were proposed, no cuts were going to be approved, and all that was requested was that the council approve this contract year now being forced to come back tonight. Let me tell you some crime statistics. We had 91 violent crimes, including nine rapes, 45 assaults, 37 robberies, 64 auto thefts, four arson, and 816 property crimes. Does that sound like we're being protected? Does anybody think that's an acceptable level of sheriff deputies or acceptable level of crime? The sheriff can't stop stuff when they're limited to five deputies per shift. They need more, and this council's not doing it is beyond reproach. I mean, you've got to step up and find more money for sheriffs. Now, one staff position was cut, and a city analyst who just spoke was just added, even though it was listed to the Assistant City Manager who would make the presentation. The council has failed to prioritize safety. The 2017 budget for sheriffs was 14 million, fire was 9 million. Yet there were only 64 fires last year. Admittedly, that's more than we should have, but 64, that's one per week. Yet we have 12 firemen on duty at all times for one fire per week. We only have five sheriff on duty at one time. The priorities are upside down. Bottom line, approve this contract, but use the next eight weeks to find at least 2 million in cuts, find at least six additional deputies, and in the long term, consider if we're over-fired and undersheriffed. I think the numbers speak for themselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malamud. Next is Amy Berberet, followed by Don Urbanick, and then Christina Selter.
Good afternoon, City Council. My name is Amy Berberet. My husband and I are San Clemente residents since 2001. I am speaking today in regards to the public safety issue affecting our city, which should be the city's council's number-one priority. After rereading an article in the San Clemente Times from Chris Hamm in July of 2018, he stated then, "Public safety was his number-one priority." My question is, what has changed? Everyone knows police presence detears crime and that we are grossly understaffed with sheriffs in this town now more than ever. Please do whatever it takes to get us more police protection, and that means making sacrifices and cutting the fat at the top, in my opinion. No cuts should be made for marine or fire safety, of course. I understand that we are fighting the ACLU, California's weak laws, and the Ninth Circuit Court. However, they don't run our town. You need to look no further than what's going on in Culver City that is next to LA. One side of the street under the bridge has Tent City, LA's side. The other side of the street is Culver City with no tents difference. LA allows it, Culver City found a way to stop it. Again, increased police presence detears crime. If we have this, the word will get out that we are not the place to go for drug-addicted vagrants that have flooded our city the past couple of years. Sheltering these people is not the answer to their plight. It's only a Band-Aid. The mental and addiction issues are the real problem. Until the state gets their acts together and addresses this issue, it will continue. We, on the other hand, can take steps to deter the problem from affecting our town. A bare-bones shelter is all we need to comply, or a regional shelter, but not in this city. Beware of anyone offering free land, for this is, for this, for there is an underlying benefit for them, you can be sure. Friendship shelters runs wet shelters. This should be another no for us. We are too small of a city with limited resources to bear the brunt of a large shelter, period. Again, more sheriffs are the short-term and long-term solution at this time to keep our city safe. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next is Don Urbanick, followed by Christina Selter, and then Susan Nelson.
I'm here, obviously, today to encourage you to sign the contract because the number-one obligation of a city official is to protect the health and safety of all the citizens and our children in particular. And this has gotten to be, I usually just deal with education issues, and I try to stay out of San Clemente politics, but it's very sad. All of you have lived here a long time, and I know that each of you, in your own way, cares about the city of San Clemente. So you have to find a way to work together until we can make changes, and maybe you could work together in a way that would show us that you all belong here. And I appreciate, Laura, I appreciate you looking at the financial side of things because there's a lot of inappropriate spending, a lot of staff that doesn't need to be here. There's some people that need to go. And Dan, I appreciate when things are not clear, like I've questioned you about the toll road at times and I've questioned you about other things. I appreciate when you do take the time to write your responses in the paper so that people can see your rationale for doing what you did do or didn't do, because that's all understandable to people. And maybe we need to see more of that. Okay? Thank you.
Next is Christina Selter, followed by Susan Nelson, and then Jean James.
Hello, I'm Christina Selter. I'm actually a resident of southwest San Clemente. I'm a real estate professional, safety senior expert, an occupant safety expert. I'm on the Board of SCAT, which is the Senior Citizens Advisory Council through the Office of Aging in Orange County that reports directly to the Board of Supervisors. I'm also a partner with police and fire chiefs nationwide on education for safety. What I'm doing here is because of last week. Our city mission statement's right on the website, and it clearly defines "safety, health, truth, honesty, professional, and courteous, and get the work done on time." Last week, we did not have that happen. That being said, I'm really glad to see that you're all four here today, really glad. Thank you, Dan Bain, for working so hard to arrange this meeting today. I know it wasn't easy. So basically, San Clemente safety is right in the mission statement for all of you. This should have been able to be approved last week, as that would have made it happen on time. On time, again, is in the mission statement on the website for San Clemente. Two deputies, one crime specialist is a good start to help San Clemente with our homeless and our safety problems, from the homeless and other issues. But let me be clear, it's a good start. There's a lot more to do, and again, two deputies, one crime specialist is great, being a senior expert and helping seniors within San Clemente. We have a big problem, so having a crime specialist here is really going to help. And then if we could just all roll up our sleeves and work together, I'm sure that we could get some stuff done. Thank you.
Thank you, Christina. Next is Susan Nelson, followed by Jean James, and then Ken Nielsen.
Hello. So, okay, perhaps, yeah, police would be a good idea. You're talking about budget cuts. I strongly urge you not to pull it from code enforcement. Code enforcement knows the city rules, knows exactly what's happening in the city. Chris and Kathy both know, after going through that whole thing with sober living houses and vacation rentals, they had specific rules. Yes, you can park on the street, but with those two, they had to be onsite parking. So a sheriff would show up and say, "What? What's the problem here?" They can park on the street. A code enforcement officer would say, "Nope, this is a vacation rental. They have to park onsite, and that's a violation." So the city would be more aware of what's going on in their own town. So please don't pull it from code enforcement. Code enforcement takes care of boarding houses, commercial and residential lighting, commercial signage, fence height, hoarding, illegal dumping, inoperable vehicles, RV parking, short-term lodging, unlicensed businesses, unpermitted camping, and weeds on private property. There were issues that would happen at these other places that you didn't really want to bother a sheriff for, because they're needed for more important things. But code enforcement, that's what they do. They uphold the law of the city, which is our own police service, but we don't. So sheriff is doing exactly what they would do, but it's not specific to our town. And the whole point of this is to keep our town safe with our rules. So please consider not pulling it from code enforcement. We need them. We finally got them. Thank you.
Next is Jean James, and Ken Nielsen, and then Don Brown.
Good afternoon, Councilmembers. I was really disappointed in the last council meeting when suddenly Councilmember Ward departed abruptly and created a lack of a quorum. We've got to get better at this, you know? Those of us on this side of the dais have to start, stop throwing barbs at people to include Councilmembers, to include Councilmember Ward. It's to the point of being inappropriate. With that being said, I think it's totally appropriate for Councilmember Ferguson to make a motion and have that motion include looking at cuts. If this were a business, the CEO would just look at department heads and say, "Cut 10%, cut 7%, cut 5%," whatever it is. And that's the way things occur in the private sector. Just because someone's a public service employee doesn't mean they have a job for life. I'm sorry. It doesn't happen that way in the private sector, shouldn't happen that way here. Whether it should be code enforcement or where it should be, I think that'd be a city management decision, but I think that study needs to be made. And with that said, how in the world are we here at the 11th hour talking about whether the Orange County Sheriff's Department is going to have a contract in this city or not? It strikes at the very basis of Maslow and the need for security in one's life. You know, when I saw the letter from Sheriff Barnes, very appropriate letter, I think, saying, "You know what? Get it together, or we're out of here on the 1st of July." That should be disconcerting to all of us. And I would ask that we do look at cuts, and we do consider how we're going to make cuts, but at the same time, we need more sheriff's deputies. And with that being said, you know, we have to look at how we build revenue as well. We need a cut, and we need to build revenue. And with that, my three minutes are not up, but that's all I have to say. Thank you very much, and please vote for that contract. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. James. Next is Ken Nielsen, and then final speaker on this is Don Brown.
Ken Nielsen, San Clemente. I hope you're going to vote yes on this contract for the police. We need them bad, and we need you guys to vote for that. Now, how can we raise money for more cops? I've thought of all kinds of ways. First of all, we talked about the TOT tax that failed twice, but that tax wasn't designated for police. It was just going into the general fund. I realize you have to get more percentage of votes to win that, but I think if the people knew that that money was going to go for police, they'd vote for it. And I hope you make sure that we have a TOT tax dedicated to police this next, the next election. Second of all, I think we could get rid of some staff. Why do we have two city managers? Isn't one enough? That's a question, not a order, but why do we have two city managers? Why aren't they writing parking tickets? I mean, the two streets next to me, you could write 75 tickets today. I'm assuming that you make money when you write a parking ticket. I know they make 300,000 a year on street sweeping tickets, and that's right for my neighborhood. I'm sure they could do the same with regular parking tickets and clean up, clean up the neighborhood. So please vote yes for the sheriffs, and let's look for some ways to make some more money so we can get more cops. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Final speaker, Don Brown.
Good morning, Don Brown, citizen of San Clemente. A few sidebar issues from the Safety Task Force. If you get five new deputies, you can now create a new patrolling area. And hopefully, as we incrementally get there, let's get back with the chief so we get the equipment and create another patrolling area. That may do a significant amount of effort to help our police presence here. The one caution I know everybody talks about in the TOT tax is, once you trigger the higher element of Prop 218, there's only, there's been less than 10 proposals approved since it went into effect in 2006 in the entire state of California. That's a high chinning bar. And so you have to recognize going forward with the TOT that somebody's got to go on faith. Somebody's got to say, "Yeah, we're going to dedicate it towards the beach area, including police control." Somebody's got to be able to go on faith if you're going to go to a TOT and back it that way, because you're never going to get it passed. There are spare fingers on these two hands of the number of Prop 218s that pass since that measure was passed over 12 years ago. So we need to get real here about what it takes to do a TOT, and if you want a higher percent, 67% vote. Enough on all that. Why am I really here? Last week was an embarrassment to our town. I'm here to talk about how we govern. I'm here to talk to all four of you that you need to get together and govern. That's what you're elected for. Last week, I wasn't here, but when I looked at the video, I was embarrassed. Going forward, the mayor and you, because you have to leave to go to work, need to coordinate. If you've got to leave early and there's an important measure on the ballot, move it forward on the agenda. So bring it to him, and you two talk, and so we can not have this situation where you've got to go to work. Ladies, in the last two months, both of you walked off the dais. Not acceptable. You were elected to govern. As a president of the Planning Commission, I always told the members, "You leave your egos at home, your opinions in the parking lot, and your feelings at the front door. When you come up to that dais, you will govern based on facts." That's what I expect the Planning Commission to do as I was chair. That's what I held them to. That's what I expect you to do. Failure is not an option. Govern. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Motion? Comments? Questions? Thanks, everybody, for speaking this morning or this afternoon on public safety contract. I, too, was disappointed that we're here at a special meeting at 1:00 PM to discuss the sheriff's contract. I'll address the last speaker first, because I think it pertains to the rest of these issues, and I'll go through the issues that were aligned by the other speakers. First one is talking to Dan. During our last break, I did inform Dan that we were going to leave, and he and I were both under the impression that there was going to be a majority support for the contract going forward, and I think it was taken, it's taken all of council by surprise when there was a motion made on the floor that was not doing that. Of course, Laura's well within her right to do that, and I'm not casting judgments either way, but I think we were all shocked. So that's my first perspective, is that Dan was under, or was aware that I was leaving, and we had discussed, actually talking about bringing that item up, but we were both confident that that issue was going to pass a week ago. To the speaker that asked or that quoted me in a, excuse me, in a SC Times article talking about public safety being number-one priority, I just want to outline some of the things that I've done in my time as city council to ensure or show how I've placed public safety as number-one priority. So first and foremost, I voted to increase paramedic coverage in the city by 30%. I've doubled ambulance service in the city of San Clemente. Two years ago, we added nighttime and weekend code enforcement to address the businesses and residential neighborhoods. Every year, I've consistently asked for more deputies, and until last year, with the support of Steve, Mayor Steve Schwartz, I was not successful in doing that, but last year I was successful in adding two deputies. This year, hopefully, we're going to add another two deputies, and like I outlined before I left last council meeting, I'm looking forward to having the discussion with both Laura and Dan to add more deputies next year, which will then create that additional district. And then in terms of, wow, that's not actually being addressed this evening. Give me one second here, folks, sorry. Yeah, the last, the last that I'll address is staffing the city of San Clemente and high top-end fat that needs to be cut. There's been a lot of stuff set out there, you know, in smaller groups of people that don't know the facts, and the facts of the matter are that when we lost our beaches, parks, and rec director, a lot of those, a lot of those duties were taken on by both the city manager and the assistant city manager, and we did actually previously, under a previous council, look at what other communities within South Orange County had two city managers, assistant, and a full-time city manager, and it turned out that the majority of cities did have that. When we eliminated the BPR director position and those duties were taken over by both department heads, we actually had a cost savings recognized by that. So if we were to eliminate one of the city managers, we'd have to look at then implementing the beaches, parks, and rec director and a finance director, which would then put our costs of doing business higher than it is today. So we can discuss that further next budget cycle. I'm sure it'll come up again, and we'll discuss at that point, but I have no comments about this. I'm excited to approve it this evening, and I will make a motion if there's no other comments.
I'd like to just comment just on a couple of things Councilman Chris Hamm said when leaving the meeting, and if you could let all of us know, perhaps just maybe after leaving closed session, because I wasn't aware that you would be leaving the meeting. So it'd be great if you could fill us all in. It'd be great. And secondly, you brought up my motion. Thank you. Was it within my right to make a motion and modify it? That's within our Rosenberg's Rules of Order, which we decided to switch to from Robert's Rules of Order back in February. And we allow our fellow members to finish their motions and then make a substitute motion to kill my motion and replace it with their own. So, and lastly, regarding the budget, I mean, I'm sorry, the contract, police services contract today, I'm hopeful we could all pass that today as is, and I'm really pleased we added two deputies and a crime prevention specialist full-time for our community. So thank you.
Any other comments? I think there's a motion. Counsel.
I'll make a quick comment. What happened last week, and, you know, I'm talking to Don here, along with other people that said that. What I did was take away the quorum, because that's all that I could do to prevent 10 to 15 critical service employees from being cut, and I did not know what would happen with that motion. You certainly have the right to do it, but I also have the right to ask you, as a colleague of yours, that if you're going to do something that is so drastic and against what the full council wanted, that you wait for a full council. You didn't do that. You just wanted to make your motion, so I chose not to participate. It's what I had, I had to do. So when you hear about the city manager and manager that we don't need them, we actually do need them, and I want to speak out now because we're not going to be here for a while. But when you ask us to fight sober living homes, vacation rentals, businesses in your, in your neighborhood, and fight to do something about homelessness and the toll road that wants to add a road right through our city and double the size of our freeway right through the middle of our town, the people that you're asking to fight that is us, but the people that we're asking to fight it is our two city managers. And they're doing that in addition to running our city and making sure that we have a balanced budget. We have a balanced budget every year, and Mr. Malamud likes to say that we don't have a long-term financial plan, but we actually do, and it works very well, and it's served the city well for a long time. It's such a good plan that Dana Point last year looked at implementing it because they didn't have a long-term financial plan and ran into trouble with their budget where they were over-budget. We won't allow that to happen in our city, and that's why we continue critical city services, because we do have a budget that we follow. And I want to thank our staff before we do this, because we won again the highest award that you can get in governmental budgeting from the Government Finance Officers Association, and I want to thank our staff, everyone that worked on that. It's every single department, and they go through the budget each year, and we ask them to do cuts and to find out where they can make, make better choices or not have things where we're paying twice for something. We've gone through all that. We've asked them last year, in order to get two officers, we made a lot of cuts. One of them was the beach club couldn't be open on a Sunday, and we did that, and we were criticized for that, and yet now we're asking irresponsibly, I think, to make 5% cuts without knowing what those cuts are. what those cuts are across the board. That's 10 to 15 people, services that we have provided in our city. And once you see that those services aren't there, you aren't going to be very happy because our city's not going to run. And right now, I think it runs very well. So, that's all I'm going to say. And of course, I was for this budget last week, and I am sorry that we are here today having to do this.
Okay. With that, comments? I'll make a motion.
Okay. I note we want to approve and authorize the mayor pro temp to execute contract C-19-50 by and between the city of San Clemente and the county of Orange, providing for police services for the 2019-20 fiscal year in the amount of $16,345,966 to approve a budget transfer in fiscal year 2019-20 for a total of $87,000 to general fund account 001-218-43625, police contract services with $37,000 funded from account 001218-48630 and $50,000 funded from account 001617-45700. Re-approve and authorize, yeah, give me a second, a supplemental appropriation fiscal year 2019-20 in the amount of $4,000 to account 002217-43625 from the police services grant fund unassigned fund balance for approve and authorize supplemental appropriation in fiscal year 2019-20 in the amount of $267,000 to account 001218-43625 from the general fund unassigned fund balance.
Second.
So, a motion by Councilmember Hamm, second by Councilwoman Ward. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Members of the audience who wish to address counsel on matters that are within the jurisdiction of the city of San Clemente but not separately listed on the agenda, may do so during the oral communications portion of the meeting. Each speaker is allotted three minutes, which gives his or her presentation. And I have a couple cards.
Great. So, two cards. First is Mr. Malamud, followed by Ms. Michaelik. Mora?
I was going to make a different presentation, but it appears that Chris and I, and I think everybody else are in agreement that we need more sheriff. I think where our disagreement is, he wants to wait for a year. I think it needs to be done now. Since we're in agreement we need more, why are we waiting? Nobody's given us that answer. We should have that answer before we leave here today. Now, I'd like to address everything that Kathy just said, and she made it personal. That's fine. But I want to tell you that Laura did not propose any cuts last meeting. No cuts were in front of you, and there was no, not going to be any vote on making cuts. So, that was a lie. Next, she said we don't, we need assistant city manager. I don't believe that to be a fact. That's an opinion. Next, she specifically said that I stated that we don't need a long-term financial plan. I've never even talked about the long-term financial plan. I've never mentioned the long-term financial plan. What I said, and I want to be clear to you, Kathy, is that we spent $6 million a year over our revenue for the last three years, and that was eating into our general fund by $18 million. That not only has not been refuted, it's been admitted to by the city. The long-term financial plan is a, is a plan that says, in the future, this is what we'll do. That's just hocus pocus. I don't care if you do it or don't do it. Whether we get awards for a financial plan or not is unimportant. What's important is that we have sheriff. So, I'd give up any awards in exchange for sheriff deputies. Asking department members whether they can find cuts is as like asking your child, will you give up ice cream one day a week? Of course, they're going to say no unless you demand it. So, the way you get cuts, as Gene mentioned, is you demand cuts. You don't ask for cuts. So, given all that, I think that this council has to gain some common sense. You're our leaders. You need to take that leadership role. You don't defer to staff to find cuts we need for sheriffs now, a year later. You don't say we have a long-term financial plan that keeps us in balance. Kathy, for your information, cities are required to have a balanced budget. That's a requirement. It's not an option. So, of course, every city can get up there and say, we have a balanced budget. Great. But we didn't. For three years, we ate $6 million into our required balanced budget. So, let's get the facts straight. If we're going to have opinions, let's label them as opinions. And I just hope, like everybody else, that we can all try to get along, that we can all work towards getting more deputies. I think all of us agree on that. Let's find the cuts we need. We're not going to find revenue enhancements in any, any short term. Let's find the cuts we need to get. Kathy, if there's areas you think can be cut better than others, good. I'm sure there's plenty of places we can find money, but I don't think you and I disagree on finding more deputies and getting more deputies to protect us. If we do, if you do disagree, I'd love to hear that, that you think we have sufficient deputies. If you agree that we don't have sufficient deputies, make the hard cuts, find where it has to be. That's for you to decide. I'm only giving suggestions.
Thank you, Brad. Next is Mora Michaelik, followed by Gene James.
Hello. Thank you for having me. I'm Mora Michaelik from Capistrano Beach. I spoke to you all last week about the ordinance that was going to codify the rules in the homeless camp into municipal code, and you all passed that, and I just wanted to make another comment. I also sent to you all a very long email, and I apologize. It's hard to be succinct when you have a brain that works like mine, so I hope you have a chance to read it, and I appreciate it if you do. So, what I talked about last week was the fact that I, I believe that this rule or ordinance would be discriminatory toward people who were residing in the camp. And I realized there's, I mean, there's other issues that are super important, but I just wanted to focus on that one. But now, I want to take a minute to mention another one. So, I was telling a colleague of mine, who's an addiction expert, who lost her 20-year-old son to an overdose. I was telling her about this ordinance, and she said, it will kill people. And I thought, you know, she was using hyperbole or something, but she went on to explain, and she was dead serious. She believes that this kind of thing will kill people. And the reason is this. So, unfortunately, we do have people who reside there who are addicted to drugs. Some are opiates. So, if somebody gets a citation, that's a misdemeanor citation, and they miss their court date, it'll go to warrant. Of course, they shouldn't miss their court date, but it happens. So, if they go to warrant, and they get picked up, and they go to jail, and they're in jail for a few days, they don't, they're not cured of their addiction, but their tolerance is greatly reduced. When someone in that condition is released from jail, they, their addiction tells them, you know, that they have, they have to use. So, it's one of the first things they do when they get out of jail, is to find drugs and use them. Unfortunately, a lot of times, they will, they won't be paying attention to how much they use. I don't know how this actually works. Thankfully, not an addict. But they, they'll, they'll use the same amount that they used to use and will overdose. It's, it's a real thing. People coming out of jail overdose all the time. So, one of the things I'd like us to think about, I'd like everyone to think about, is that we can't deal with what should be. Of course, they shouldn't do drugs. Of course, they shouldn't break the rules in camp. Of course, they should get to court when they have a citation. So, yes, they, that should all happen, but we have to deal with what's real, what actually does happen. And unfortunately, people are addicted, people break rules, people miss court, and then people die. It, it just shouldn't happen. It just shouldn't happen because of a rule infraction in the camp. Thanks.
So, next is Gene James.
I will not take up my full three minutes here. I guess what I'm disappointed on today is just an absolute drawing a line in the sand. No, we're not going to look at budget cuts. My God, people, this is leadership, and you are the stewards of our, our hard-earned tax dollars. We spend a lot of money to live in this city, and it should be a continu-, anyone ever hear the, the term continuous improvement? Well, this should be a continuous improvement project. We should always be looking at, at how we can reduce the cost to the taxpayer in this city. And right now, we should look at cost reductions in order to fund the sheriff's department, in order to fund public safety. You know, it's all well and good that we, we have balanced budgets. It's all well and good that we have two outstanding public administration professionals leading our city management. That's all well and good. But why, why can't we have a study to see where cuts could be made? I'm not proposing to you to, to just arbitrarily say 5%, 7%, 10%, whatever. I am proposing that we should have a study, an independent study, to look at where the expenses are in this city, where we can cut expenses, and what is so wrong with that? And it, it seems like there's an extreme reluctance on the part of Councilmember Ward to look at such a thing. I don't get it. So, I ask the other three council members to have an open mind going into the new fiscal year on how we can have cost reduction in this city. It's how things occur in the private sector, it's how things occur in the nonprofits, and the public sector should be no different. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Excuse me for my gym clothes. I was coming from physical therapy for my knee replacement. But having gone through a lot of this stuff in industry before and also in government, I would recommend you consider not tasking staff with, find me a 5% cut or a 10% cut. Given the requirement, go out and find what is necessary to fund X amount of deputies. Because if you want them to do the meat acts approach, they're going to find 5% here or there, or whatever. Give them the requirement, not a percentage. That's the way you'll find, you want two more deputies, you want another patrol district, lay the requirement on the professional staff so they can work it. That's the way I would recommend that you consider it. And do all the continuous improvement you want, but set the requirements properly. That's what drives the answer you're going to get. Because if you want it real bad, that's the way you're going to get it, real bad. So, set the requirements based on what you feel the needs of the community are. Thank you for your time.
City manager?
Nothing to report.
City attorney?
No items.
Councilmembers?
Yeah, I got something.
Okay.
I'll go back to you. We received a copy of a letter today from the city of Mission Viejo directed at our supervisor, Lisa Barlett, talking about the cost increases to the sheriff's contract. And it's going to be my recommendation that we direct Mayor Pro Tem Dan Bane to pen something in similar vein to this, to our supervisor as well.
Any objections to that? I don't have any objections to that.
I have another request of the mayor.
Okay.
And of the council to consider, AB 1219, I believe it's Senator Gonzalez, actually Assemblyman Gonzalez. It deals with unfunded pension liabilities for JPAs. The fire authorities brought this up. It hasn't, it hasn't been voted on yet, but the League of Cities has come out with a letter of opposition because what it does is it puts the unfunded pension liabilities of the JPAs on the cities and not on the JPA. So, when we're looking at something like TCA, where cities have wondered why all this time it's bad to let this agency just keep continuing and paying themselves hundreds of thousands of dollars a year, it's because we, we might be on the hook. Sacramento might be trying to make the cities on the hook for those JPA liabilities. So, because there is a letter of opposition from the league, I would like the council to direct the mayor to be able to sign that letter while we're, we're out, or have the discretion to look at it, I believe. We should, we should look and see what that entails. I just was aware of it yesterday.
I haven't read the legislation. That's what it does. I have an opposition to that. I have actually coupled it with my-
Sorry. Couple it with one other item, which is Levin proposed the Spent Fuel Prioritization Act. So, I'd like to look at whether we should take a support position on that. I don't know what the timing is, but if we could take a look at that as well, if that's something that would be helpful to San Clemente, then perhaps those two items we can look at in conjunction if we need to get something out over the summer break. So, and since I have the, the mic, can I just finish up really quick?
Please.
So, I think we all probably saw the news article today about the beach bummer list, and I think that we got report about San Clemente Pier. We talked about that earlier this year in terms of what we were going to do to try to look at the causes of that. I did get some emails and some questions about it. So, is there anywhere on the website that we've posted kind of what we're doing to address that?
Yes, but what we will do is we'll add to the latest news, a very easy shortcut to get to that page to see all that documentation today.
Perfect. Because I want people to be aware that we are looking at the root cause of that, addressing it. We've got studies that are ongoing, so I think it was just a surprise to some folks, you know, about what had happened there. And finally, I was taking opportunity, I didn't comment during the police services contract, just because I wanted to get that item through and passed. I think, just speaking for myself, I think we have done a pretty good job at the dais and working together. I know it probably doesn't appear that way at times, but I know there've been areas where we've each given a little bit and, and tried our best. You know, I support adding more deputies. Chris has said he supports adding more deputies. I think Kathy supports adding more deputies. One of the things that we found out from Sheriff Barnes, and I want to make this clear, is that they're going to do an assessment later this year regarding what level of service they believe each of their contract, 13 contract cities needs. We're included in that. So, when we talk about what we need to cut, we're sort of talking, I think, a little bit out of turn right now, because until we get that assessment back from OCSD and we're able to evaluate that, I don't know if that's going to be two more deputies, five more deputies, 20 more deputies. I hope it's not 20 more deputies, but we'll, we'll find out from them. We also are going to find out here in the next probably week or two, what exactly the increases from OCSD are going to look like and what that's going to do to our budget. So, I would be supportive, and I think Councilwoman Ferguson is going to bring this up, but I would be supportive of going back and looking at what type of cuts would we need or could we do to do three or four more deputies? Because I think we've all talked about in terms of, we've already added two. So, I think our report from our Public Safety Task Force last year was five, so we could add a new area, looking at maybe three, maybe four, what those cuts would look like, where we could get if we wanted to add those, and then have that prepared based on what the Orange County Sheriff's Department comes back and tells us what they think our, our service is. And again, I'm not going to take what they tell us, you know, we're going to do our own evaluation, but just being prepared in that process. So, people keep saying, why is that not being done now? Well, as I said last time, I don't know how many more deputies we need. I mean, why not 50 more deputies? Because that would make us all incredibly safe. Obviously, that would mean $10 million in drastic cuts. I want to have it coincide with what our deputies are telling us they need and then budget accordingly, not sort of budget and then have them say, yeah, you guys budgeted two more million bucks. We think that's what we need. So, that's the why. I think that was the question that was asked, is to the why. But I would be supportive of looking at how we can fund three to more, four more deputies so that we're prepared at the end of this year, next budget cycle, to have those ideas in mind. And also looking at the revenue side of it as well, where we can fund with additional revenue to offset cuts.
I have a question for you, Dan, before you make your comments. So, I think I just need clarification, Dan. You're asking for that to come after we get the sheriff's recommendation?
Well, or to coincide with that. I mean, I want to, I want to know what that is. I think what I'm directing now is to say, let's look at how we can get three to four more deputies through cuts.
Yeah.
But knowing in the why this would be coinciding with that is because we don't know what the Orange County Sheriff's Department is going to tell us they think we need.
Well, so, having gone through this process multiple times and asked for more deputies or more CSOs or more investigators every time, it, it comes out very conveniently that whatever our budget, our discretionary budget looks like, that's conveniently what the sheriff's tenant needs. So, I would, I liked your first perspective of let's, let's start with a clean slate and let them direct us, because I have a feeling that if we say, well, let's find money for three or four, magically, three or four is going to be the number, right? And to your point, if the number is much larger, which I suspect it might be larger, I'd, I'd rather know that. So, I'm comfortable with waiting until that report comes out and then giving that direction to adhere to that, so we're ready for next budget season.
So, let me do a follow-up. Do we know when that report is going to be out?
Well, pursuant, pursuant to the letter that we received, it indicated towards the end of this calendar year. I would suggest we begin our long-term financial plan at the end of the year in preparation for the new fiscal year. So, timing of the two kind of seem to complement one another. And as you recall, at our last LTFP, we had our first white paper on public safety, you know, kind of a holistic public safety overview within the city. We do continue, or we do plan on continuing to have that public safety page in the LTFP going forward because of the concerns that have been brought forth by both the council and the community. And so then, as part of that white paper within the LTFP, depending on what the sheriff's department provides results, that would be the appropriate form, I would suggest, that we could look at the, that analysis of how to fund those, those numbers.
Okay. So I, I sort of want to find the middle ground here, because I know Councilwoman Ferguson wanted a look at this after the summer break. One of the things I would like to see is we just had settlement of a lawsuit, and we had budgeted $250,000 to $300,000, I think, towards finishing that lawsuit up, which is now an open item. So perhaps that's something that we could look at in terms of funding an additional deputy? Or, then, sorry, just to finish real quick. And looking at other areas that, we got that one for this year, obviously, that's not an ongoing, it's not an ongoing item that we're saving. But just taking a look at that sooner rather than later, because I think Councilwoman Ferguson, I don't want to speak for Councilwoman Ferguson, but I think her idea was, let's just start getting an idea of what that is. And maybe Chris is right. I mean, maybe we can do this in a manner that says, we're not agreeing to do this, so that we don't come back and have, you know, that money spent with OCSD in terms of what they're, they're allocating. But I do agree, there's no harm in looking at where potentially we could either reallocate savings from this year or budget cuts. And again, not a 5%, but with a target number of, let's say, three deputies for now, since that was the recommendation last year, it was five. I would be interested in that.
Dan, let me just, I want to hone down on what you're saying, because I'm still hearing mixed messages. So first and foremost, you said, let's hear what the sheriffs have to say, right? And I know that during the budget, a month ago, we talked about doing a mid-year budget adjustment to satisfy Ms. Ferguson's request. So we're kind of coming up against those two at the same time.
Sure.
And I just need to reiterate that, every year in the contract, conveniently, if we needed, if we had $190,000, we'll say, and investigator costs $190,000, guess what the sheriff asked for, an investigator? If we had $40,000, guess what they asked for, a part-time CSO? And so it's, it's really dependent upon what we said. And I, I think the city would benefit substantially from having an unbiased look from the sheriff saying, this is exactly what you need. My biggest concern with saying, let's find three or four now, is that we, we give that direction publicly, and then guess what, that's what we need. And then next year, it's, it's going to be a continually moving target. Your perspective of, let's add a deputy if we have no more legal costs in terms of the moral care lawsuit settlement, I'm comfortable with that. I think that's a, a great direction to move forward. If we can recognize those cost savings and implement that before the mid-year budget adjustment, I'm 100% on board. But I think, I think we would all benefit from an unbiased perspective, from the sheriff's perspective, on how many deputies we actually need. Because Brad clapped for 50 more deputies. I mean, it's, you know.
We, we can't dispute the facts, though, that we have the highest number of calls, right? A business town. Out of all the OCSD service areas in South Orange County, and the least number per shift. So we can't dispute that. So we need more, the facts show that. So, I mean, that's public knowledge by this, by this time. Are you finished, Dan? Can I say a few things? Let's see, regarding AB 1219 that Councilmember Ward had stated, do you know where that is in the process? Because I was at the Animal Shelter Board meeting this morning, and Isabel, a colleague of Mal Richardson's at BBK, had said that in the last, I guess she said it was, I believe that it'd been six months already since this bill, and I'm not sure what she meant by that. I was asking if any JPAs had made the shift from their retirement plans into CalPERS since this bill? And she said, no, it's only been six months. So you're saying it hasn't been signed into law yet?
No, it's showing open.
Showing open still? Okay, that's great. Then I, I totally support a, a letter on that. And then regarding LTFP and budget, I'd just like to propose to the assistant city manager that next year, when we go through this process, we have more involvement by the public and the city council. I got my LTFP report five days before the meeting with no input, and same with the budget document, several hundreds of pages, five days before the meeting with no input. I'd love to go back to the past where we had, whatever we want to call it, but we had a vital few priorities workshop. We do that in the city where I work now, and the public comes, a lot of people from the public came, and the council, and you go through all your priorities. And it's at that time when you can really drill down staff levels and capital projects and, and really try to stay spending less than what the revenue bring in, rather than the reverse, what we saw. And then also, let's see, regarding the police contract and funding deputies, which we know we need, that can't be disputed, I just don't think any reasonable person would oppose looking at an organization and seeing where we might be able to find some efficiencies so that we can free up some money for more deputies. So we just can't compromise public safety. Crime doesn't wait. A year from now, you know, who knows what will happen? But we need them now, and hopefully during the year, we can do that. It's very standard, in fact, very routine in general law cities to do mid-year budget adjustments. All cities do that. I've worked for many cities. So hopefully, we can find that as time goes on. And with this letter, this analysis by the sheriff, that can all come together, and we can get that done for the community, because that's been a demand for three, four years now. And then lastly, since the homelessness town hall that we hosted, we've had many people who attended, want to be involved, and Mayor Protam Dan Bane and I already sit on the subcommittee for homelessness, and they want to help us. So we want to have them join our subcommittee and expand that. And I came up with some, little bit of a framework as to how we live, you know, got to this point of interest. They wanted, people want to join us. I have a list of 12 people now who've sent me their names. And they want to be part of creating practical solutions to emerging community needs. They want to provide input, provide research for us as we address the homeless issues, because as we know, it's a very complex issue, and we have lots to resolve still, and make recommendations on homelessness to the city council. And church leaders reached out to us, and Mayor Protam Dan Bane and I met a couple of months ago with about 20 church leaders. They want to help, they want to be involved, we should take them up on their help, along with the residents. Oh, the Human Resources Committee wants to continue be involved, as you know, and have many forums on a variety of topics concerning homelessness and addressing that. So I think that's wonderful. And then the goals of it, I've talked to a few people, would be continue to bring training and education through the HAC, Human Affairs Committee, obtain expertise and ideas. There's a lot of people that have a lot more expertise than me, and even our city, you know, dealing with the homeless. We need to engage them and bring them in, and support resource-driven solutions for reducing or preventing homelessness. And then coordinate better with local providers and resources. We heard from a lot of residents at the last meeting that, you know, it's, there's a long list of people waiting for resources. So we can try to break through that and connect people and figure out what's going on there. And then just bring updates to meetings when we have our standing update, like the toll road, on homeless issues. So what do you all think?
I think that's your guys' subcommittee. If you guys want to add people, that's up to you. I don't think we have. Yeah?
Okay, great. One of the things that I'm, I'm not sure of is, I think we created the subcommittee in order to look into doing a public forum. I don't think it was a standing committee. Like, we need to look back on the record. It's, it wasn't a standing committee. And also, the last thing that we did with the human affairs, we said that they have to come back to us with a work plan. We, that hasn't been approved yet for this year. So kind of wrapping all that in, that still needs to come to us.
Okay, perhaps we can make this an agenda report for the next meeting to discuss more thoroughly and vote upon whether we should expand our subcommittee. I don't think this needs to be another commission or a committee or anything like that, but something that, you know, like an interim subcommittee advisory group or something.
What do you think about this, Laura? Joanne, why don't you just pull the minutes from when we approved the, what are we calling, subcommittee?
Subcommittee.
And then see what the direction was, and if it was standing, then it's gangbusters. And then if it's not, then bring it back, just like Laura said, and then that way we can make changes. Okay?
Perfect. So can I, go ahead. I was going to say, we have an action list, I just want to make sure it's, it's been adequately... So AB 1219, we're going to take, look at taking a support position there. The Spent Fuel Prioritization Act, we're going to take a look at that as well and see if we want to take a support position there, a concurrence, yep. And then where did we land on our?
Oh, yeah.
The sheriff's letter.
Yep, the sheriff's letter, so yeah. So sending a similar letter that the City Mission Viejo sent to OCSD. And then where did we land on our mid, mid-year budget review with deputies, looking at three deputies or so?
I was thinking about that while Laura was giving her presentation. So I think there's an opportunity for city staff, if there is some savings this year. The direction's clear, we want to add more deputies.
Yes.
So if we have some cost savings that happened this year, I think the city management can bring that back to us for a deputy that we've saved through legal costs.
Mm-hmm.
And then as far as, just throwing a number out there, Dan, I'm going to support your initial recommendation, which is let the sheriff tell us what we need. I don't want to muddy those waters at all, because, like I said, in years past, we muddy those waters every time, and then it comes out conveniently to suit our needs, as opposed to what the actual needs of the community are, so.
Okay, and then I still, so based on that, then, do we have agreement that we're going to look at ways to either cut or increase revenues, or both, to look at funding that number? And look, and I'm not saying we take whatever they tell us we need.
Yeah.
Now, we, we do our own evaluation, but we at least look at ways to cut, as Councilwoman Ferguson suggested, to achieve that.
So I think to, to that point, during the budget process that we all participated in, I agreed and made the recommendation, which was approved by all four council members, that we do have mid-year budget adjustment.
Okay.
So that's already been addressed.
Sure.
So I'm, I'm not moving off that position. I still think that's a great idea. In the interim, what I'm doing is directing staff, if we do have some cost savings, we would be able to bring back a deputy, which would then put us to the five that we requested last year, which would be a new district or patrol area. And that's entirely upon our lieutenant on how he wants to allocate those five deputies, so.
Okay. Is that, I want unanimous agreement here if we can achieve it, so.
Yes, unanimous agreement. Okay.
As long as there's cost savings, but I am not directing, I'm not changing the budget for this year. Because everything's set, all of our capital improvement projects are set, staff is ramping up, I'm not changing that.
Yeah, I think staff's very clear on my position and Dan's recommendation, which is if there is some cost savings recognized by the recent settlement.
It's looking. The budget was approved June 4th, we're not changing that. We never were.
Is that understood, Eric?